Oh, I see Dan, but.
All right.
Don't tell me it's happening to you too.
Yeah.
Monday, April ninth, twenty eighteen, regular session of animals at city council, city hall council chamber. One point oh roll call.
Here.
Kay Smith?
Here.
Matt Card?
Here.
Rod Smith?
Here.
Shaker?
Here.
Weimer?
Here.
Two point oh, college allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh, motion to approve amendments from the following meetings, March twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Cody. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Four point oh, public hearings. Five point oh, presentations. Four point one. Okay, it must be five point one, John Ely, dog licensing and animals presentation.
I sent consul an email last time before the last meeting.
John, you need to identify yourself.
Okay, I didn't know since I was on the schedule. My name is John Ely and I live at three oh one North Davis Street. I sent an email around and I polled you guys and it looked to me like not everybody had read the email that I sent, although I did get several acknowledgements. So very briefly, I'll go over some of that. What's new in the material I gave you, I parsed it. The two fiscal year seventeen dog licenses issued, with those issued in two thousand eighteen fiscal year up to and including, I believe, the twenty-first of March. What I found that only thirty-nine of the original two thousand seventeen dog owners had registered their dog. And there could be reasons for that. Some people could have moved away. Some people might have gotten rid of their dog or the dog might have died, I don't know, but it seems like that's a really high number to me. And based on some of my personal experiences with city ordinances, it's my opinion that a lot of times they're not enforced at all. Sometimes when they're enforced, they're very selectively enforced. It's my personal opinion based on the experiences I've had. So I think many people just don't feel any need because they're not enforced, you know, why should I spend three or four bucks, go through all the trouble to license my dog if my neighbor says he doesn't license his? And I think in my email, I told you guys, look through and see if there are dogs in your neighborhoods that aren't on the list. I'll bet there are, I know there's several in my neighborhood. And I think there's some people, and this is very subjective, you may think it's a dig, but I think there's some people that don't feel the city ordinances apply to them. You know, maybe they have a lot of real estate, or maybe they have a city office, or something like that. I think all dogs need to be licensed, and I think what Kay said about the rabies shots holds true. I've never owned a dog personally, but I was bitten by a dog thirty-five years ago on the hand. Wasn't very bad, it was not here in town. I was walking down the hill down into Stone City with a guy, he had his dogs with him and the dog just decided to nip my hand. So I think they do need to be licensed and the enforcement should start right away. Not, you know, two weeks from now or a month, but now. If the owner is cited for not having a license and he can prove that at the time the dog is cited, the dog has had the veterinary, the required vaccinations, the fine should be pretty small, whatever the cost to enforce the ordinance is. If it does not have those shots, I think it should be a big fine. I don't think five hundred dollars is unreasonable. It's a public health matter, you know, not a lot of rabies around, but it's out there. Why do we want to take a chance? Maybe the second offense should be take the dog out of the city. Maybe seven hundred and fifty dollar fine, I don't know. The cost of the license shouldn't be excessive. I think it should be an even dollar amount, a so-called greatest integer amount, whatever the cost is to license the dog. Just go to the next higher dollar. And maybe there could be some sort of, I think I hear a dog complaining. I think there should be a possibility for some incentive, and I don't know what it would be, but if your dog is chipped, you know, we should encourage that if we can. So maybe there could be a reduction in the fees somewhere for that. And the main thing is I think the cities, when they record these things, should use what they call a relational database, something like Microsoft Access, where you can make queries of the data in a range of different ways, and I suspect what's being used is what they call a flat file, which is something like Excel and it, it's a little harder to make a copy. I know it cost me ten bucks to get that information, and I think if you had access or something, it would be easier to handle and it would cost less. I think the database should be accessible both to the police department and the city hall. And if it were kept at city hall or in the new computer system, so the both can access it, there shouldn't be a security problem with the, with the police, so that's. And you might want to include the sheriff in on that, so people could get into that and see those things. So that's, those are the things I wanted to say. Does anybody have questions or anything? Okay.
I have one comment about for ten dollars to get, come in and get copies. If it's no more than an Excel information, is that something that can be an attachment and sent to him as an email and then he wouldn't have to pay for it?
Yeah, I did get that on a disc, because I asked for it on a.
Oh, you wanted it on a disc, okay.
Yeah, so I don't know what a CD costs, but but the labor would be, I think, a lot easier with the access database, you just make a query of this stuff and list it and you wouldn't have to print out the whole thing and have, you know, like thirty pages or whatever it might be. If you included the whole thing, I know, to copy all the data on a, on a, either one of those, you, you could just copy all the data under the CD and it would, I don't know, it might take a minute.
My laptops don't take CDs anymore, so that's why I thought if we could just attach an email.
Yeah, yeah, I'm a little behind the times because I haven't done this stuff for a long time, but, yeah.
Thanks, John.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Six point oh, proclamations none, council action items. Seven point oh, community betterment. Seven point one, discussion possible action on cemetery rules and procedures for placement and removal of flowers and items on the graveside sites and Riverside Cemetery.
Greg, did you find any other examples or?
I think Tammy probably did.
Tammy did.
Yeah.
So Tammy found these other examples of cemetery regulations and I know you guys have discussed this in the past, but I don't think there was resolution to it. So just trying to, I guess, trying to figure out exactly what your guys' desire, so we can draft up, you know, an ordinance to, or establish some updated rules.
So a couple of the complaints that I know I received were flower arrangements, like that were on top of the stone, were, were taken and disposed of. I think when people had their permanent fixtures thrown away is really what got a lot of people up in arms, and then the inconsistencies on, on when things are thrown out and when they're not.
Well, it's the lack of notification.
And notification.
Specifically, I think this time. I know, aside from on top of the monument, I had, if they had like the vases on the side of the tombs, on the headstone or whatever, that those inserts were taken out too without any notification, but I think the biggest thing is the notification and the timing. That was the biggest of this last go around.
Shouldn't the ones that have the vases on the side be left alone?
Well.
Because those inserts cost six bucks a piece, just, just seeing.
Well, that's what people were upset about is things that are reusable from season to season or year to year were pitched and.
And the other thing I couldn't tell from reading, and since I can't walk the dogs in the cemetery, I don't walk the dogs in the cemetery anymore. I couldn't tell whether, you know, you have the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine, you stick a thing in the ground and you have the military plaque, I couldn't tell whether those were permissible under the ordinance.
Well, and I don't think it states under the current ordinance, I think part of why we have all these from like Marengo and stuff is to compile, to come up with a new one for us. Did we discuss that it should be the same week in the spring and the same week in the fall that they go clean? I mean, it's like everybody knows Pumpkin Fest is first Saturday of October, everybody knows Home Show is first Saturday of March. Like, over time, we'll know that the first week in April or sometime before Memorial Day and the second week in October, however, whatever we decide, but.
Right, and there is a sign in there saying for the springtime, what that cutoff date is. So that it is notified and at the, down there at, in that scenario, but it doesn't say anything about fall. And, you know, that's where the problem come in, comes up, is the fall cleanup. So. And I guess the question is, aside from, is it necessary to do a fall cleanup unless there's unattached items, because the unattached items are going to blow around, and you don't want that happening. But if they're attached, is there anything that needs to happen to them?
Well, and I think the fall cleanup, and other communities that I've talked to, they do the fall cleanup to get rid of the dead Memorial Day flowers that have been put there and left and nothing done with. And then people put stuff out for the holidays and it stays, and then the spring cleanup is to remove the dried up, dead evergreen mess left there.
Yeah, the Memorial Day, that's people, they come once a year. You know, a lot of them, and they aren't back, and I can see that, but I know there's some people, they put fresh flowers like every three months on their parents. And they're in the containers on the monuments, so them should be, I think they pretty well take care of that themselves. Because they said they replace them, fresh ones every three to four months, whichever it is.
But I think that's why, and if, and I've read through these, like, this is very interesting to me, all like the different ordinances for the different cemeteries, and if we're going to redo ours, and this is going to sound odd coming from me, but I guess I'm not opposed for people walking their dogs in the cemetery. I, why do we have that? That's a beautiful place to walk.
I figured it had to do with.
Picking up after them.
They weren't cleaning up.
And then it becomes what, like the geese?
Yeah, sort of.
I mean.
The geese aren't as bad as the dogs.
But.
When the dogs were walking, I saw people, but their dogs do their duty and not clean them.
Like on Main Street sidewalks?
Yeah. Or in front of my house.
Greg, tentatively, what what are the weeks that you would go in and clean the cemeteries?
Memorial Day, which is our standard spring, when they're probably sometime around October, somewhere in there. We did talk about making sure that we did put that in the paper, the notification stuff, and put some extra money in the budget. And in order to do that, you know, since, since last fall, when we did the cleanup, each spring we take one of them, pick up loads of stuff out there. It is blown all around, over the sides and everywhere else. We didn't have to do that this year. And we kept an eye on, you know, throughout the winter when the snow was down on the ground, how many people actually attended graves. We had about twelve, like twelve graves that were walked up to by people, six of, about six of them were maintained on a, on a regular basis.
And I see Marengo says all flowers and decorations, artificial or natural, will be removed for one week during the fifteenth of March and the fifteenth of September each year. So Marengo does it twice too.
I do think Rich hit on the hip, we made a mistake because we didn't advertise enough people.
That was, I think, the biggest thing. Well, the biggest, and it was kind of a compounded in the fact that nobody could get into the cemetery for a month. When they could get in, I think, what, three days later, four days later, you guys went in and cleaned up. So some people got in there finally for the first time for a whole month, might have put something fresh down, four days later it's gone.
You know, one of the things that I talked about is, you know, we have our city ordinances. Well, one of the big things is with the cemetery, it's, you know, I talked about it earlier. Since I've been here, it's pretty much been a free-for-all. The stuff that beer bottles, I found some needles over there one time on a grave, one guy was trying to put a flagpole, you know, next to a grave, you know, trinkets, plaques, things like that. Whenever you're mowing and taking care of that, when you, when you go by one of them, and it has all kinds of little trinkets and plaques, it blows it all off, you can't wait to blow away from the stone. So it blows them all over the grass, you got to stop, pick them up, put them all back on, you know, and so it's something that, that we need to look at, I don't think that, you know, nobody's just flat out breaking the ordinances for a reason, I think it's just been allowed to go for so many years. Or to get more and more and more stuff compiled and something.
And I think everything that people put there has a special place in their heart, or they wouldn't be doing it.
Absolutely.
But I do agree that small items, like you said, when you're mowing, they're going to get blown around. If they want them really there and to be affixed, they could take some epoxy, put them on the cement pad, or put them on to the tombstone or something, if that's what they truly want and have it permitted.
You know, if you're putting something out there in the weather, where other people are at and everything else, you know, something that's, that's very sort of valuable or sentimental to you, you know, for your, whether, whatever reason, you know, that you think if it was of that much value, you keep that kind of stuff as, or at home, but.
It'd be nice to come in the middle where, like, I know the cemeteries that you have to have your containers like below the ground. Like, you can't have receptacles higher so they can be mowed, quick mowed. I don't want to go to that extreme, but at the same time, without guidelines, we're pretty soon going to have people complaining of nuisance properties and nuisance gravesides.
Well, I do think there's, there has to be guidelines. I, I agree with that. But, you know, we've also got to be sensitive to people and their feelings.
Well, I don't know when the ordinance was written. But if I were guessing, I would guess it's been a while, and I can remember when I was a kid, you went to the cemetery on Memorial, before Memorial Day, and you put out flowers, and that was pretty much it. But now I see folks going on a regular basis, and oftentimes, when there's a death, as you suggested, they put out mementos and flags and balloons and all kinds of things, so I think that there's been some evolution as far as society's desires about things to be allowed to put in the cemetery that we need to be mindful of.
From a I guess administrative perspective in terms of taking care of things, obviously the more you allow, the more difficult it is to maintain. So that's why, and, and I think several of these other communities only allow items that are physically on the, the marker or the cement base. If you allow anything off, then that's just one more thing you've got to train them all around. And that, that adds a lot of time, a lot of cost to the maintenance of the cemetery, which that's just something we have to keep in consideration.
Let, let me ask a question on that, Greg. If somebody put in a shepherd's hook and it's butt up to the cement pad, is that a problem?
No, as long as it's right next to it, it's not a problem.
So if we said something about, you can place, say, a shepherd's hook or something, a small flag or something, as long as it's within so many inches of the cement pad, would that work?
It'd be nice if they were right up against them, because when you're weed eating, you're trying to weed eat between.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, trying to get the grass out of this, this much area.
But if they could stick it right butt up to it?
Yeah, if they stuck it right next to it.
But sometimes you can't, because you have a, your headstone, for lack of a better word, I think that's what they're called, is set on a cement slab.
Right.
And the cement slab is under, is hidden, and so you can't put it up to the headstone because that cement slab is underneath it, so there's about, I don't know, in my cemetery, there's about this much space between the headstone and the ability to stick something down.
There's dirt and grass growing over top of the cement pad?
Yep.
If the pad's buried.
If it's buried.
Isn't it buried here? I don't know.
There's supposed to be above.
Most of them are not, no, some of them.
Oh, okay.
Some of them are overgrown, over the top.
And that could, that could just be a matter of, you go, somebody goes in and kind of edges them out, and once they're edged out, they're fine for the rest of the year.
Sure.
As I read the current ordinance, it would be line item L. It's, it spells out that there's a one foot radius from any monument, monument being, per the definition, the stone. I guess I, I don't have a problem with those objects being within six inches, or in case with the current ordinance, one foot. And if it does, obviously it's going to cost more for maintenance, trimming, weed eating around these objects. But I believe the city can stand for that.
Well, and when you're talking, when you're talking potted plants, you could move those easily if you had to. But like for shepherd's hooks, whatever, those are in the ground, you're not moving those. So those need to be close.
The, some of the, the ones that were provided in other city ordinance or cemetery regulations that I viewed, they do permit items to be within six inches of the furthest existing point, which could either be, you know, headstones, footstones of older, or, yeah, in the current ordinance, we have to have a rim base. So I would say within that furthest existing point, whether it's the stone or the base, they permit six inches or the one foot as it currently is. I do agree that I think the portion of the backlash with this was due to the lack of public notification. So one way to try to shore that up could be to make part of the ordinance a week, twice a year, Greg, that you believe you can get your team in there. Again, weather permitting, so let's not pick March first. And clean. But also with that cleaning, any items that are on the rim base, on or in, on or in the headstone or footstone, to me are off limits. That's, that now becomes personal property. And if there's dead flowers within a vase on the headstone, that's the responsibility of the family to clean and remove that, not the city's.
So are you looking at removing? And lot owners and others are prohibited from placing on lots or graves any toys, cases, boxes, globes, shells, cans, drugs, bottles, bric-a-brac of any description, wooden benches, chairs, settees, henboards, headboards, or wooden articles of any kind. So if we're going to allow people to come and put cans, bottles, bric-a-brac, toys, shelves, if we're going to allow them to be doing that, we have to re, we need to redo this ordinance because we're where we are, every Monday night we sit at this table, we have ordinances that are not being enforced or followed.
There's already cans, bottles, bric-a-brac, everything else is, is out there.
And see, some of this, I agree, should, we should not allow, and some of this we should allow. I, I think for my personal thing, I'm looking at bottles, should not be allowed because odds are they're going to end up getting broken, then the glass is going to go wherever.
No glass bottles.
Yeah, something, you know, something to that nature. The term bric-a-brac.
I know.
What is it?
Yeah, I don't know what it is either.
One person's junk is somebody else's treasure.
And, you know, wooden benches, chairs, yeah, those things have no place.
And I agreed with what you were saying, if it was my grandson's grave and he loves trains, and I wanted to put a little train out there, it should be attached to the tombstone. I don't think I should just go put one out there and walk away. I think having.
It should be fast and so, if you're clearing up, you could epoxy it to the front of the
Yeah.
on the cement and the headstone.
So if we're going to rewrite and redo this, I think we have to take some of that into consideration. But yeah, kind of that happy medium.
Yeah.
As far as the public notification, it should be written in the ordinance that it is, it's actually public.
Multiple perhaps ways, and on the website as well as in the newspaper.
Could we add it to the bottom of the water bills, like we do with the dog licensing?
The months that we're going to clean up?
Yeah.
Goodbye.
But then if you have somebody, if you have somebody that doesn't live in town.
Well. But it doesn't cost us anything.
It doesn't cost us anything, but if we put up the sign every time they enter the cemetery, they should hopefully read it and know.
That would be.
But, you know, hopefully, but at least the, the publication is there, the notice is there. We can't force anybody to go in and do anything, we can't think for them, but we can provide as much information as we can.
I agree, I think that it's on the water bill, if there's a sign hanging, it's on the city Facebook page, it's in the newspaper, we put it out there.
We've done as much as we can.
We've put it out there.
Our cleanup should only be what is within the border of the stone or the rim base. Our cleanup should only be what is within the border of the stone or the rim base.
Or what the ordinance says, once it's rewritten.
We should not be removing anything that is on, in the headstone, on or in the rim base. That now is personal property. So if, if this train is just sitting on the rim base, and it can withstand the winds of the season, we do not remove it. We remove what is within the border, the six inch or the one foot radius around the headstone and base. That is what we should be responsible for on the city property.
So for the next meeting, should we like before now and then, should we send you, or do you wanna redo this ordinance and send it to us, what you think by what we're saying?
I mean, that's a, yeah, I'll try to draft something, and I mean, if you guys have.
Changes, I mean, I would say that would be the one change, is try to figure out how you can have a momentum at the grave without it being, well, I guess it doesn't matter how it looks if it's on the basis.
I think there's some.
We still need to take that into consideration. We don't want a bunch of silk flowers that are now all white from the sun.
Well, but if, if it's on top of the monument, it's up to the owner to.
Somewhere we have to use common sense.
It's going to.
And I know we struggle with that. Daily, but it's, aside from me going out there and showing everybody how to do it, I mean, at some point we have to.
But you're always.
Hope we have people that can think for themselves and do the right thing.
Cody, I agree, but you're always gonna offend somebody. It's the nuisance property, some people don't think their property's really that bad.
Well, let's put it this way, going to Cody's thought about the, the faded flowers. Odds are they might have been put in there by somebody who came out from California, put them in, and they haven't been back. You know, the people that are local and keep up their, the grave sites, they may change those flowers out four times a year, depending on the season. Those aren't going to be the ones that you're gonna have to worry about. It's gonna be about the ones that, yeah, they came, saw grandma, grandpa's grave, put the flowers on in August, and they haven't been back for the last two years. I mean, those are the ones that probably go to Cody's comment.
Ours says, no permanent planting of any kind by lot owners is permitted, does that include grass seed? Well, the way it's written, it does.
They're talking about trees, brush, shrubs.
I know, I know, I know.
Grass seed, you're only seeding, you're not planting.
Oh, I'm not, okay.
You're just spreading it around.
All right.
There's nothing gray area.
So we want Jacob to bring us back to us in two weeks.
I think I trust Jacob to go with the stuff he gave us and kinda has an idea of what we're looking at and come back with something.
We'll give it a start anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like a plan.
And I liked how we had whoever did it, I don't care who did it, but I appreciate having, um, I talked to a friend of mine on the city council in Shelsburg and asked what they do there, but other than that, I appreciated having what different cities do.
Alrighty, so.
Jacob, you bring this back to us at the next council meeting. So we analyze it.
Yeah, 'cause Memorial Day is.
Get one reading in.
Around the.
And follow up with whatever readings need to be after that, because we are getting very close to the time of the year where your team will be looking to get out there to clean that cemetery.
We'll host that, it's two or three weeks, depending takes care of that each, each spring.
So would you be willing to get with Jacob and identify your spring and fall weeks, sure we can.
Alright, so moving on, seven point two, discussion of possible action on the city sponsoring a Better Together block party.
So, um, I guess Better Together group approached the city about sponsoring, uh, one of their block parties, um, as a good way to get, um, some positive interaction between our city staff and community, which I think is an idea. And, uh, I think I made contact with everyone except Cody, I apologize.
Oh, no, buddy.
Basically, we've got some, uh, rough ideas in terms of planning to host it on Ford Street, um, just outside City Hall, and have all the department heads bring, uh, a truck or some sort of interactive, uh, aspect to, to model what they do for the city, and, uh, will, uh, there'll be food and music and, you know, basically what, you know, similar to what the other Better Together block parties have been, but wanted to make sure that we had all the ideas from the council, um, you know, come together in one vision, so.
Is this something that we're creating a budget for and funding out a council contingency, or?
I mean, I think there are definitely some things we have to purchase, so, uh, somewhat of that, I think we're trying to keep it as light as possible with getting, uh, things, uh, donated and, uh, into that, so.
Does the city provide the insurance, or does Better Together do it, or do we not? We take a chance and don't have any?
I will have to look into that, I think.
Well, and.
Better Together ever has, but.
No, there's no alcohol served, so we don't have to worry about that kind of insurance.
No, I wasn't thinking in terms of alcohol, but if somebody falls and.
A concern in terms of liability, yeah.
A liability thing?
I'll, I'll make sure there's probably a, a special event add on to our current policy, so.
It may have, it's probably gonna be the same as when the LCC does something, maybe.
Do you have a date?
Yeah, uh, what were we talking about?
June first.
June first. Uh, from five to seven thirty, I believe, is what you were discussing, uh, that's following the last day of school, is that right?
Last day of school's the thirtieth.
And a location?
Right, right now I'm probably.
Fourth street, I think, is the plan.
Once you guys get as far as where you have flyers, like, and what we've done in the past, I can find what Better Together has done in the past, but they've taken a page like this, and they've done two, like identical invites, just cut them in half, and then deliver them to the schools, and they'll put them in the kids' backpacks, like, the week of this, like, before they get out of school, so that helps too.
We're also planning to, uh, have dog registration, uh, dog licensing and
bike licenses.
Bike licenses offered at the event, um. We're planning to do the, uh, kinda like a bicycle rodeo, where kids can have their bike checked, get, uh, some safety, uh, instruction, and also, I don't know, we're working to get some free helmets and stuff like that.
No problem, we had them last time.
Yeah, the hospital donated helmets, bike helmets for kids, the last time it was done, the bike rodeo was done.
Yeah.
And then, am I right, Travis, there's a car seat, safety check?
Yes, we need that.
So, that'll be a lot of good stuff, so.
So basically, I, we'll keep looking to get the specifics worked out, um, I, I think we've got somebody working on food and somebody working on music, but, uh, any other ideas you have or whatever, just let me know, and.
Well, if any of the departments need help, reach out to us, like, if you guys need anything.
Are we requiring employees to be there?
Uh, at this point, unless the council feels otherwise, basically we're asking department heads to be there, uh, and asking the rest of the staff to volunteer their time. Uh, if it's something you wanna require, then we'll have to pay them, but.
Tyler, when does the pool open?
Memorial Day.
Get the snow out.
Yeah.
Alright, so we got the block party going, so seven point three, discussion of possible action on an American Gothic statue.
So, I think this is kind of a fast-moving item, and I'm not, but my last bit of knowledge is basically that right now to get it, we need, I think, five thousand dollars with a committed, uh, commitment of twenty thousand. And I'm just passing out a picture of the statue, it's twenty-five feet tall, but, uh, obviously being the statue's American Gothic painting, it's, uh, would be a good fit for our community, and, uh, it's a large, uh, financial sum, but I think it could be a positive for the community and there's potential, I don't know how, how costly, but potential to try and get it permanently. But I didn't know what you guys' thoughts were in terms of actually, uh, trying to contribute towards that amount right now, I think it's just a very small amount raised, uh, so.
Is this something Chambers spearheading, or are we taking it over now, or?
The, my understanding is, uh.
A combination.
The Chamber has kind of been working with, uh.
Tourism.
Well, yeah, or, or David.
Hometown pride.
Home, yeah, uh, Dave Hire from, uh, Jackson County, uh, Economic. Is kind of the one, I think, helping us make our contact, so. The statue has been in Dubuque, and I think it's currently in Indiana, um, so I just don't know what you guys' thoughts are.
How long would it be here?
It's kind of, uh, up in the air, they say, uh.
They're predicting ten months.
Like ten, it could be ten months, but it could be longer depending on.
It could be longer if another.
If other communities step up and wanna pay for it.
It'll stay here till it goes to another community most likely, and the other thing is, if we get it here in the summer and we have it for six months, they're not gonna come remove it in the winter. So it'll stay at, at least till spring.
The cost or the, the charges to have this in a community is sixty thousand dollars. That's what they figured, moving and then to erect and tear it back down. They have negotiated with the foundation because of the close tie to Grant Wood, uh, to permit it in Anamosa for twenty thousand.
We had said.
Yeah.
So Jones County tourism isn't being any part of this at all? Like, they're not helping raise money or do anything to help bring it here either? Do you, has anyone re, reached out to Bob?
Well, at our last meeting, we discussed it, but we were not a part of that discussion of funding.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just said that that was a possibility to come in.
I guess I've, I've been in a couple meetings where it gets discussed, and then, you know, the money comes up and everybody kinda gets quiet, and so that's, it seems like it gets brought up in different circles and, and nobody's.
Oh, this would be great, oh, man.
So that's where I'm, I mean, I'm, if, if, and I, I don't know, uh, you know, it's, you know, your guys' decision with the, the city's finances, but maybe if, if somebody were to, to step up, other groups would.
Well, I think it's our byline, so to speak, like tulips or pillows and.
Yeah.
So, there's a nice article in the Smithsonian this month about Grant Wood, and so maybe people will be coming to visit.
So maybe if we put five thousand up, somebody else would.
Maybe.
So you guys wanna go up, go with the fire?
What would it come out of, just like, do we have a budget for?
I don't know what the contingency line item has, I know you guys have a contingency, but.
For contingencies, right?
Do you know, I think.
And I, I guess I can, I can look and see, you know, where.
I would be willing to put some money towards it.
I would.
And, and maybe it just needs us to get the ball rolling to.
We put five grand in, and somebody else will put five, pretty soon it's.
Someone's gonna have to be the lead in.
I make a motion, we put five thousand towards this.
I'll second.
First by Betty, second by Kate, to put five thousand in, uh, possibly getting the American Gothic statue.
Maybe they'll forget a tear and we'll have it forever, on five thousand dollars.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried? Maybe that'll work, maybe we'll push somebody else, yeah.
Has nobody else, nobody else has, are we the first that is committed?
Um, there's a couple other groups that have smaller amounts, and the Chamber is meeting Thursday, and we're discussing it a lot as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just so you know, the Chamber does have an account for that set up now.
There is a Grant Wood Committee Foundation Group. Challenge them to match the five thousand.
Absolutely.
Alright. Did you wanna say something back there?
I'm, so I'm on the Grant Wood Art Gallery board, and they, we just had a meeting right before, so I ran here. So they, they were able to commit one thousand dollars for it.
Can you go back and challenge them for another four?
Yeah, we've been challenged.
Alright, moving on, seven point four, discussion of possible action on repairs needed to Anamosa school sidewalk on the north side of Walworth Avenue.
I guess this is another item that was been brought up in the past, and just wanted to address it again and see what, what you guys think, but my understanding is, it's like any other sidewalk, uh, it's responsibility of the adjacent property owner and.
Which is the school.
Which is the school.
Yep.
Somebody told me, we, the city is responsible for that sidewalk, and I'm like, why would the city be responsible and not the school?
Well, a damn camera, the.
Storm sewer, yeah.
Yeah, storm sewer, which is on the other side of the road. We don't have any utilities on that side of the road except, uh, two intakes, uh, which are further down the hill that run across, and the storm sewer was absolutely perfect.
So water running down the hills, my theory, and eroded underneath the sidewalk in the cloud.
When they re, when they took the old junior high down, and they regraded that whole area up there, they graded it all to the south, which is a huge area, and it, off, off that hill comes an enormous amount of water, right down across the sidewalk and into the street. And now, it's not even, it's got even worse, now it's not only sank, but there's several places in there that collapsed from cavities going down the hill.
But they also used to drain the boiler too, go by there and there was water, just they drained it every so, had to do it, I suppose.
It's not what that white tube is.
Yep. There was a lot of water come out that, and I'm sure that didn't, probably started it. Yep, and there was a lot of water come out that and I'm sure that didn't, probably started it and now with this other is.
The school has always plowed that whole sidewalk and now that they've been notified, uh they showed up and they put some small barricade over where it's collapsed. But it is, does belong to the uh the property adjacent to that does belong to the school. If we don't do something very soon, we're not gonna have a street there, so it's gonna eat underneath that street if it hasn't already.
Well, and the other, the other portion of that is it also tou- it that sidewalk ties into the planned trail.
Yeah.
And so it needs to be fixed.
Absolutely.
There's there's no question about it, has to be fixed.
I've been seeing a lot of people walking the street avoiding that sidewalk, so that's.
Yes, we do, because it's terrible.
Yep.
Yes, we do.
And you can't walk it.
Have you met with the superintendent at all, Jacob, on it?
Not on that issue.
Um, do you have time in the next two weeks to meet?
Yes.
Sorry, I hope there's an extra day in the next two weeks.
So we gotta throw it back to the school for them to hopefully fix.
Do we need a vote on it or should we, it's just the consensus if it's the school sidewalk, they're responsible?
That's what the ordinance said, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page.
Yep, it's their sidewalk, so.
Their next meeting will be next Monday, I believe, so.
Bill, you gonna come up to the?
Yeah, I just don't know the meeting was.
Bill Carlson, here's FYI, their next meeting will be next Monday, they meet opposite Mondays as you guys.
Thank you.
So probably.
Do it before then.
That's the time to get it to them before that.
Thanks, Bill.
Alright, thanks.
I'm good. Well, and if I remember right, Bill, I think they set their agenda on Wednesday, so.
Yeah.
It would be better by Wednesday.
No rush, just. Maybe I should go down and fall.
The school, so I think they may be interested in doing that for the school.
What, I didn't hear what you just said.
Roger's concrete.
Roger's concrete, contacting me to do a lot. And the pro bono work for the school and they should send us a note about that repair of the sidewalk.
Did you catch what he said, that your agenda's prime, I'd say?
Yep.
Alright, eight point O, public safety, eight point one, motion approval of renewal of beer and liquor license, none. Eight point two, discussion of possible action on first reading of ordinance prescribing civil penalties for failure to license dogs.
Some move.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Betty. Any further discussion?
Did you all get the kind of explanation from the package?
So was the Adrian had stated that we could put a statement in.
Yep.
Which would cover the confusion or any controversy on for each day a dog?
It would, yeah, it would just basically add what I think is intended to be the typical operating procedure, but uh just just saying that we won't, that that addition would say that we won't uh cite someone until the previous citation has been uh followed through on, um that's just an option, um.
Well, I guess that's, that's where I'm a little confused, is the motion to include this statement? A citation for an enhanced violation of this section shall not be filed prior to final adjutation of the preceding citation. Is that statement going into the ordinance?
Right right now, that's not what the motion does.
I'd be happy to add that to my motion, Rod.
And I'd be happy to second that in my motion, Rod.
I'd be happy to vote on it when it comes to.
And it's a roll vote.
Is there any more discussion about it?
Do you have any discussion?
There might be some, but it does.
Can you tell us what it is, what you've decided on the Nancy Shaver eight oh three North Division Court, sorry?
First offense.
Are you the the change or the full ordinance?
Pardon me?
What are you asking for, full ordinance?
Yeah, um just, it's hard to have a discussion when it on what the ordinance is reading, if it's proposed ordinance.
It's the one where the first offense for an unlicensed dog would be sixty-five dollars, the second offense a hundred and thirty dollars, and the third offense two hundred and sixty dollars. The fourth offense would be seven hundred and fifty, along with removal of the dog.
Okay, I do have a question. So, will this be during this fiscal year? And it will start, renew every fiscal year these these tiers?
As I read, yes.
Pardon me?
As as I read it, Nancy, yes.
So are you saying if in May or June you get written up for not having your dog licensed as a first offense?
Yeah.
Now it becomes August, July, August, it's still not licensed, you wanna know if it's now a second offense or it's another first? Is that your question?
Because it would be renewed July.
If it was a new, yeah, if it was.
The offenses are just absolute, so I mean, you could have four for the du- duration of the dog's time in the city. But the licenses are due, are run on a fiscal year.
But the offenses aren't run on a fiscal year?
No, you don't get four, you don't get four fences per year, you get four offenses.
Period.
Period.
Cause if you don't license your dog the fourth time, it's gone.
And not per year? Does that make sense?
No, that must be in a fog tonight, so.
No, I it, I like it this way.
I guess I have a question, what is the purpose of the dog license? Is the purpose of the dog license to show that the dog has had its shots?
You have to prove that when you get your dog license.
I mean, per state code, you have to give your dog ra- rabies vaccination, whether we choose to recognize that or not, that's state code.
Well, and if there's a loose dog and it's licensed, then you um have.
Well, I'm not against the license at all, I just wondered if the cost was a little high for the first offense.
So, I think we voted on these, these are what we decided on at another meeting and I think it was to take the seriousness of it only costs three, four bucks to license your dog. And it doesn't matter what kind of dog you have, that by not licensing it, we're gonna have a stiffer penalty.
So are you requiring that they have the license on the collar always? Or only requiring proof of license?
Nancy, I would think that the the enforcement, code enforcement officers would be willing to work, you know, sometimes that stuff falls off.
Right.
At at the end, you know, prove that your dog is licensed is licensed.
Okay, so then I I'm going back to why Kay is asking the point of it and if it's not on, then you cannot look on that tag to see what it belongs to, so.
Well, I would hope that if somebody's dog got out, the first person they would call is the police, did you pick up a shelter if it got out of the fence, I mean.
Um, I, I don't know.
It's not a perfect system, but.
Right, no.
It's better than.
Right. Um, and you will also, I believe it's if the dog is in your possession for three days, after three days, you have to license it, it is considered. I think, is that in the present ordinance? On the timeframe for licensing?
I don't remember that, did I overlook that, is that, did you read that in our ordinance?
I thought I did, but. Well, there's something someplace. Yeah, so then I, what I'm saying is, I I strongly believe that anybody, if they are fostering a dog, that they should not balk at having to um to pay three or four dollars to license the dog. Well, I agree.
Yeah.
Even eight, and even if they're gonna say, well, this is only temporary till it's found to home.
Too bad.
Still, still in town.
Yes.
Should be, yeah.
Somebody has to claim owner, claim ownership of that dog.
Well.
And you are claiming it as a foster.
Well, and if it is a foster and it does get out, the police department will know where to go if the license is on the dog, to return the dog or talk to those people.
Right.
Well, and they should let the police know that it's losing their.
Well, and yes, and and my point is, um many times when you're fostering a dog, um those are the ones that are most likely to take off.
They're skittish.
Yeah, so they they should, yeah, they should not have a problem with paying that three or four dollars when they're fostering, yeah.
Should be.
Okay, thank you.
I agree.
Thank you, Nancy.
I'm back again, John Ely, three oh one North Davis. And I just wanted to point out to Nancy that it's not three or four bucks, if there's a stray dog and you don't know if it has a rabies vaccination, it should have one. I I talked to somebody that happens to be in this room a while back and they said the any, anytime their dog goes to the vet, it's a hundred bucks. And sometimes it's two hundred, so it's a substantial investment. But I do think anybody that wants a dog should make that investment. I don't own a dog and I don't wanna get bit by one that has rabies, even though it's unlikely. I don't want that to happen, I don't want that to happen to anybody. So I think that people wanna ha- and I know how kids are, you know, daddy, I want a dog and so and so will give me one, and I've been through all that. But I think to be responsible, that dog's gotta have a rabies shot. And and so people know whether it has a rabies shot or not, it should be licensed, if it's chips, that's a big plus, you know, the vet can read those chips, I'm told, and come up with all that information, so that's what I got to say.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Travis, can you refresh, refresh my memory as to what, what are you required to provide at the time of uh animal registration?
Rabies vaccination, uh agreement right now, they're just. So what do we require?
That's the only?
Proof of rabies.
Bill Carlson, I just got a que- question on on how long you have to have it? Isn't the, isn't the vet, they won't vaccinate them until they're a certain age? If my memory serves me correctly, they've gotta be a certain age before they can be vaccinated like a puppy? And I don't remember just what that is.
If if I remember right, and I I don't know, out of all the different towns I've read, I think they've always said after six months of age.
I'm I'm thinking that's possibly what it is, and I don't know if your ordinance reads that, but that's something you need to consider because if, you know, you got a pup that's not old enough yet, okay, they can't be licensed because they don't have a rabies vaccination.
I can't remember exactly if it's six months or.
Yeah, I.
But the ordinance does accommodate for.
Six months rings a bell, this is what it could, it possibly is. And then you're talking on your uh instances per dog, okay, not per year, okay, let's say you've got your dog licensed and two years from now, you forget to relicensing. Okay, you've you've had one, okay, two years from now, it's a second offense, cause you forgot, you messed up, you forgot. I think that's a little stiff on something like that, I I totally would understand, you know, within one year. But if it's, you know, two, three years down and you you've screwed up and you didn't get the dog licensed within the the time, um that can happen.
Hopefully it doesn't.
Hopefully it doesn't, I understand, but that's pretty stiff to go on um to do that.
But along with that, Bill, you could always say it'd be about like your driver's license, like I'd do is look at the tag, see when they expire.
Right, you gotta look at the tag, correct, correct.
And it should be on the dog's collar, so.
Right, 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 right.
And every June.
But that's just something, a comment.
It's like changing your battery in your.
Right.
Smoke alarm, that's so every June, license your dog.
Right, but I do know, I do know there should be a minimum age. Four months, they can be.
The ordinance reads four months.
Four months, they can be rabies.
That's what our city ordinance reads, four months.
Okay, and and I didn't, didn't know.
Whether that's a rabies correlation or if that's just what the city decided to do, but four months is what we require.
I didn't know.
Thanks, Bill.
Tom Durkin, Fish House Road, I live in the country, but own some property here, I believe it was Betty brought up a good point several months ago, out-of-town owners. I think you said you have relatives that visit, I have a puppy that travels a lot with me, what's the status on that? I mean, I don't have a problem paying a license.
I carry my my thing from the vet that says that it had a rabies shot and.
Mine's on a tag because Brian Darrell gives you that metal tag that's almost impossible unless you rip their head off the loose.
And then there's a tag too. Yeah.
So are you saying if you don't live in town, but you're in town working on your property and your dog is with you, does your dog have to be licensed?
Yep. Or any out-of-town people, like I said, I don't have a problem, because what is, what was it, three, four bucks, whatever it is. So, I mean, that's cheap.
Does the county still require licensing, they used to years ago.
I don't believe they do anymore, they have a leash, the county has a leash law and I believe that is it, just a leash law.
I would think if you had a tag that stated it was vaccinated for rabies, that would be sufficient.
Okay.
County does a visiting dog.
It comes down, it comes down to the owner has to prove, I mean, if a bite occurred, it's the owner's responsibility to prove what the dog has and what the dog doesn't have.
Cause I I believe the shots are rabies and distemper.
Yes.
And I don't know if you guys have just the rabies, and I can't remember if it's one shot does both or what it is, but also, is there a fine for dogs, for people letting their dogs go to the bathroom on your property?
I would hope so.
Cause I know when we were in Florida, I had someone that was continually letting their dogs use our place to go to the bathroom. We finally caught them and we called the city, it's a two hundred and fifty dollar fine, first shot, two hundred and fifty bucks. And I know I have a couple places that they like to use.
Behind you.
Yep, behind both buildings. So I didn't know if there was a fine or if you guys are gonna put a fine in there or.
I think there is one in our ordinance.
Is there already one?
And how do you? You don't think there is?
I'm not gonna commit to that right now, Tom.
We need to add it though, Tom.
We'll look into it, okay.
Should be something, I agree with you.
And then maybe that on a basis of, and then how do you go about proving, I mean, pictures, I guess?
Yeah.
Well, I caught one on my camera one time.
No, it might be nice if we had a couple of stations with bags in certain places around town to facilitate.
And most responsible dog owners carry their little thing of bags on their leash.
Oh, I know.
We wouldn't have any of these ordinances if we had responsible dogs.
Exactly.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Kelly Day, one ten West Walnut Street, is there a timeframe where you're allowed to, for instance, if I get a dog, May first, um June first to July first, that's when it starts, right?
When you start, Travis.
Okay, so if I get a dog June first, how much time do you have to get that licensing done? What's the timeframe, cause if I go out on the fifteenth of June and haven't gotten the license yet, am I gonna get fined that first time?
Since the owner has three days, once the established residency has been determined.
Okay, so in that three days, I gotta take off and come, take off work to get in, to get the licensing done then, that's, but understandable.
Civilization.
For the renewal, it's pretty fair, it gives, you basically with this penalty ordinance, you have a two-month window to get your renewal every year. But, yeah, when you're bringing a dog in or you've caught a dog first time, it's the three days.
Just make sure you have a date planned to get off.
Well, and and to that effect, I think Travis said that if you call.
Well, we can be.
They'll work with you.
And we've discussed in the past where you could. And we've discussed in the past where you could take the actual dog license and print it off from our website, right?
Well, we've looked at.
And that they could fill it out, make a copy of your vet thing and put your three bucks and drop it in the water bill overnight thing. I mean, I think we can come up with ways.
Yeah, and if you guys can come up with some sort of form, I'm sure the animal shelter would be willing to put it in the packet. They have adopted quite a few dogs to Anamosa and they would be willing, any dogs that are adopted to Anamosa, they could put information in about your licensing requirements.
One more, Tom Durgen, on her, uh, comment there, not I wanna put anything else like in the water department or anybody from Anamosa, but when someone's new to town and they're coming in, they're signing up for the, do they have to do the, sign up for water in person? Or can they do it through the mail? Cause, so, can they ask them at that point? Do you have a dog or do you have?
It's in paperwork that we provide.
It's in a packet, yeah, they give them.
The problem is they sign up for water now and then they get settled in their new home, they throw that paperwork away and get a new dog in a year and they didn't, yeah.
Didn't get a dog.
But it's there, so.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
Ready to vote? It's a roll vote.
We will start with Crum.
Yes.
Kay Smith?
Yes.
Matt Card?
Yes.
Rod Smith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Weimer?
Yes. Was that the first reading?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm noting we're gonna bring up the possible way there, second and third. Eight point three, discussion on possible action on noise, street closure permit submitted by the Anamosa Chamber of Commerce for Main Street closure from Ford Street to Huber Street on Saturday, July seventh, twenty eighteen, from ten AM to midnight.
So moved.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Kay. And you evidently have some.
Um. I have a question, but go ahead, you might answer it.
Okay, Doug Edel, two oh four East Walnut Street, um, and I'm on the committee that's organizing this event. We also have Cassie Strube, who's president of the chamber, Kylie McDonald, who is chamber vice president, and Chuck Bildstein, who's chamber board member.
I didn't even see Chuck behind that.
I didn't.
So, uh, I guess the, the plan that we had put together is pretty well laid out here. Did wanna make just a, a couple of comments and then, of course, we'll entertain any questions. We had met with, uh, Sergeant McNally, um, and Chief Deputy Jeff Swisher. We also met with, uh, Greg Carpenter from Public Works and I had a brief visit with Jacob when I turned this paperwork in. So, uh, Greg had expressed some concerns about closing Main Street for this event, uh, which we understand and Jacob kind of reiterated those things. Um, you know, we'll do whatever the, uh, whatever's gonna work out, um, you know, we wanna cooperate, we wanna make this a good event. But we do, we do think that Main Street's, um, kind of a core part of the whole event. You know, I think that's what most people think of when they think of Anamosa. If it doesn't work out, if we can't have it on Main Street, we'll, we'll find another way, but we do need to know where we can have this event because, uh, that'll be part of our, uh, application for the beer license. Um, we're just applying for beer only, so I think it's beer and like wine coolers and that kinda stuff. We won't be selling any hard alcohol or anything like that. But we need to know where that license is gonna be, cause we can only have, uh, delivery to that set location, so.
It's only one block, Ford to Huber and then like L shaped and then Booth Street, Booth Street, Ford, Huber. Is that right?
What we pro- proposed was, um, from the, uh, west end of Huber Street, so that the Huber Street intersection would be open. Uh, Booth Street would just be closed off at Main Street. It wouldn't be L shaped, it would just flow straight down to South Ford Street down here is, is what the proposal was.
So it'd be two blocks, but one intersection.
Yeah, I guess if you wanna call that Huber to Booth, a block, then, yeah.
I gotta call it something.
A long, a one long block, I would say.
So, uh, was, did, was everything?
Was there, so was there an issue with the city in doing this?
Our main concern was just the, the cost that the city will incur, uh, I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea. And I understand wanting to have it on Main Street. But with putting, uh, the city crew out on Saturday morning and Saturday night, both on call out or, uh, call out pay, just our estimate, um. And I, I guess that, what else did I, we, uh?
What else were we talking about, having, trying to?
Oh, doing the, the fence, fencing around, um.
An maximum amount of fencing.
We were looking at about two to three thousand dollars and, and just our labor to do those things for the prep and tear down of the event.
This is gonna have to be set up, if, if we did on, first off, this is only for like three to five hundred people, you know, when we do Pumpkin Fest, we're talking ten thousand people.
So.
We, by the time we had, if we're gonna have it on Main Street, that means we have to set everything up exactly the way Pumpkin Fest is set up. We have to do the, not, the detours at each end of town, but no parking on all the side streets and stuff like that. It's gonna take a considerable amount and then I don't know, we talked to, uh, to Doug there about it and, and after looking at it a little bit, a little bit more into it with the fencing, just the cheap plastic fencing, we're gonna need some bracing and stuff to put on the concrete to hold the fence up and and I don't know if they're gonna need help setting this up. I know when the, when the city set up the beer garden for the, uh,
For Rag Ride.
Bicycles for Rag Ride, it took them a whole day for the city employee to set that up. So, they were talking about putting up tents and possibly wanted to drill holes in the streets to put the tents up. Um, I don't know why it couldn't be placed on a side street such as South Ford, you know, for three to five hundred people or even North Ford. It's not that many people, but I don't feel it closing the street for thirteen hours is probably a good idea.
Could the barricades be set out downtown on Friday night and then the committee put them up on Saturday morning?
Well, it's not just barricades, they wanna fence the whole area off and charge admission, so those barricades aren't gonna work. Everything has to be fenced.
And there's the detour as well.
So the fencing would just be across the street, correct?
So building to building.
Building to building, so you're looking at about sixty feet.
You got the street, you got the street here, you got the street the other end, you got Booth Street and you got the alley.
Yeah, I would pose to you, I have plenty of fence for that, there'd be no cost for fence for that, figuring out how to get it stood up. You're correct, that might be a bit of a challenge, but we've got about eight hundred feet of fence that we use for our softball diamond, would work perfect for that. And that's not a lot of fencing to do, it really isn't, I mean, we could handle that pretty easily, in my opinion. Uh, moving the barricades, that's a different thing, we'd have to move barricades and you're rerouting, uh, detour signs and so forth. I don't know if we could commit to help putting up some of those signs for you as well to alleviate some of that city cost. Would take some volunteers, but we're willing to do that kind of work.
But, and we're pretty good at finding volunteers, you know, the, I think the biggest two things that we looked at, um, as a committee when we started talking about this event was that we wanted to bring people downtown Anamosa and downtown is not a side street. It's, it's just not, that's not where the majority of our downtown businesses are. And we as a committee and as a chamber are trying to support those businesses downtown and throughout Anamosa. Um, and that was one of the biggest things when I first came onto the chamber, that there were a lot of complaints about, the chamber doesn't support the businesses, we don't support the businesses. But we wanna support our businesses and we wanna do that by bringing three to five hundred people downtown to see what we have to offer.
But aren't you, I, I, I'm a little off here maybe, but you're trying to bring people downtown, but you're fencing off each end and charging them to come in? How are they gonna, unless they pay the price, they're not gonna be able to walk up down Main Street anyway, correct?
Let, let me.
During that thirteen hour period?
Let me ask you this, have you talked to, say, T and D and the businesses that are downtown that could be impacted by the street closure for that whole day?
They would still be open.
It would actually be fenced.
Well, they'd be open, but.
It would actually be fenced inside the street, so be fenced inside the street.
So the sidewalks are open, so they could.
And we're also fencing because of we're selling beer, so we wanna make sure people are twenty one, you know, that we're.
So you're, you're actually gonna run a fence from Huber Street to Ford Street along the sidewalk on both sides?
No, 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 just cross, cross Main Street.
No, we're playing for it out on the sidewalks.
Down the side, okay.
So, because, because.
So that the businesses could still be open.
Cause otherwise they'd have to pay the entry fee to get in to get to, say, T and D.
The sidewalks would be open.
Okay.
And then the other purpose was because, another big reason for us is when we do have the beer delivered, we have to have an address to take that to and the chamber office is right there. So that was another obstacle we were trying to get around. What, what, what's the cost comparison for a side street versus Main Street? And I, and I do realize it's more work, I, I do realize that, but what is the cost comparison for the city?
Well, you would still need to have street closure sign, wouldn't you, and stuff up?
No, they're just the same, just the same, yeah.
Whether you're saying you're closing Main Street or you're closing Booth Street, do you have to close it anyway?
Well, but if you close Main Street, you have to definitely reroute that traffic.
And let the semis know outside of town that that's gonna be closed, that's the one, one thing. I, I like what you're doing, Doug, it's great, but that's. But it, it works, it just takes time to get the signs up, you know, works for Pumpkin Fest, so get the word out ahead of time that.
And it's hard because I don't want to rain on sunshine happening in our community. I don't want, if we can make it work, I wanna figure out how we can. We don't have enough people saying we need to have a party in Anamosa, everybody should come. That doesn't happen near enough, so the fact that it's happening, I wanna try to figure out how to make this work.
So if our guys put up signs, no parking signs on the detour signs Friday and picked them up Monday and your guy, you had a crew of people to put up the fencing on Saturday, then essentially we would not have to pay any call out pay.
I guess I'm not sure how we would have the detour sign that far advanced.
You gotta leave the detour in route from Friday all the way till Monday?
Can some, can, I'm sure one of the people on their crew can lay the detour sign down at the end of the event.
How do they do it currently for Pumpkin Fest? How do the detour signs, when did they go up, Saturday morning or Friday night?
They went out at six o'clock Saturday morning and we took them down at six o'clock Sunday night.
Okay. Does that include for the highway too?
All the detour route, yeah, we put them throughout by Hardee's, throughout the other end of town. Plus all the no parking signs, you got, what, two barrels, two or three barrels of no parking signs all the way down First Street. Round this way, around the north side of town. I mean, you can come up with enough people to do it and stuff, I.
Yeah, I, you know, I.
Fine.
If, if we gotta move.
Takes eight of us to do it.
If we gotta move the barricades and stuff, I'd be glad to come in and move them with a skid loader, I got one of them, the waste fire pot I can use. If that's okay with Jacob and you guys. Well, I guess the.
Volunteering for the community?
Yeah. I guess the. One way that, that we could look at, uh, and I don't know what you guys are like estimating for your proceeds, I'm not trying to like rip all that from you, but like, like, I can't remember what the, the fee was, it's like twenty five dollars for the street closure permit, I think. And maybe that's something we need to look at, just because, I mean, it does cost us money to do this, is all I'm saying. And that's, to me, seems to be the way we run and so, um, maybe that's something we can look at, uh, to try to just, that way we don't have to have this conversation every time, we know, or at least offsetting it a little bit, we don't have to get the full amount.
Yeah, that, that's something that actually did, did come up too and, and, um, you know, I, uh, you know, from my experience with, uh, with Pumpkin Fest, like, like Greg pointed out, um, and, and that, that is quite a bit bigger event, I don't think there'd be quite as much involved with this, but, uh, um, I wouldn't wanna try to tackle everything that those guys do with, with our, with our volunteers, so I'm, I'm a, you know, a little bit hesitant to make the commitment to say that, yeah, we'll have fifteen people there to tear it down at midnight and get the street real reopened, but, uh, I guess that, you know, um, you know, maybe, maybe we try it one way this year and see how it works, cause hopefully if everything goes well, we're, we're hoping this is gonna be a, an annual event.
Do you have a projection of like what you're hoping to make?
Kylie, I think Kylie's.
Kylie's the money girl. Oh, my gosh. Um, I mean, we're hoping to make like fifteen hundred to two thousand on admission, like people coming in, if we had three thou- three hundred people, um, plus our beer sales and then our bike ride. So we're hoping to make some good money, but we have a lot of big projects going on at the chamber this year, you know, we're trying to get the.
Right.
Different stuff going on, but it's just dependent on how many people come, if we get bad weather, it could be a big dud, but we're hoping for good weather and I think a lot of people would come out for music on the street and downtown and, I mean, I can see it going a lot bigger than three hundred also.
That'd be great.
Well, not to compare ourselves to other neighboring communities, but Monticello gets through a whole week of the fair with parking and detours and figuring that stuff out. I think we can handle this and, and get through it. Uh, one more day besides Pumpkin Fest for, for a community event, so.
Well, we have a lot of openings downtown, if it would get one person interested in moving here, opening a business here. Two or three thousand dollars for the street people is, would be a small amount to pay, I would think.
Yeah, over the life of their wages in the future.
Yep.
And they can ride their bike to the new Groundwood couple and take selfies and.
You know, the way I'm gonna look at this is, is the fact that if we just invested five thousand on the statue, this is an investment into the community.
Exactly.
So, if we're willing to do one, we should be willing to try, at least try this one.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We already have.
Oh, I have one.
Oh, okay.
We have a first and second on this, we just need a vote.
Jacob just said.
We just need a vote.
I, I just wanna be clear, so the motion is per what, uh, the Anamosa Chamber of Commerce has presented. So we're talking Main Street, not the side streets like.
Correct.
Greg had petitioned for.
And my, my question was about the intersection, I was confused about if it was one block and I understand.
He's just making you wait. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, Gary.
That's the hurry, right?
Nine point oh, Public Works, none. Ten point oh, finance. Ten point one, discussion on possible action on resolution approving the hiring and setting salaries of seasonal part-time employees for the Anamosa Aqua Court and the Parks Maintenance Department for the upcoming season.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Cody. Any discussion? It's a roll vote.
We will start with Matt Card?
Yes.
Rod Smith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Weimer?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Kay Smith?
Yes.
Alrighty. Eleven point oh, City Administrator's Report.
It working?
It was.
Um.
Some of these kids are really curious.
First, just wanted to give a quick update on the Chief of Police Search, so, uh, we received forty-two very strong applicants. Um, as selected nine for underused, that'll be held, uh, tomorrow night and Wednesday night. So I, I'm very optimistic of where things are going with that. Review, the review of the emergency sirens, um, I've. Been working on that, uh, basically just trying to get an idea of how, how far all the sirens are from a residential. Structure, so that we can kind of deal with them all at once rather than load one at a time. I've kinda got that mapped out for each one, and so I'll be contacting. The radio communication systems to kind of go over that and figure out what the rationale was placing them originally, and if, if they need to be moved or not. What our options are and cost as well. Hopefully we'll have either something resolved or it'll be something to discuss more at the next meeting.
Can I ask whose department does emergency sirens hold on? Is that the streets, is that, that's the police department? I mean, because we don't really know, do we?
It used to be fire, well.
The fire department?
That new siren that went up on William Street, that come, Bob and Bob O'Keeffe and all that, it's not even paid for it too, so. It's, yeah, it's kind of one of those, it's, it doesn't necessarily fit perfectly into one department, I mean, cause we don't have like a, it means that it's an emergency. Notification system, it's used by the fire department, it's, could be used.
Which would help you if you had that?
Well, yeah, I've got them all located now. It's just one of those things that. It's not been under one department in the past, I guess. I, I still get more information on the email posting options, we, we're still waiting on more detailed quote for. A couple of different solutions to really get a, a good discussion of where we wanna go with that. And I, I wanna make sure we get it right, not bounce back and forth. And then lastly, I guess I'm not looking into the super detail on this, but, uh, I was approached by an individual who. Recently bought property and they're interested in a, in a. Voluntary annexation, uh, they're currently, I mean, surrounded by city limits, but this property is not. Um, it's a, it's one of the few remaining islands within the city of, of, and there's more property that they don't own that. Within that island, and I, I guess it basically just, he pleaded to meet with that property, that other property owner who isn't necessarily interested in voluntary annexation, but. It would make sense if we're gonna do it to do the whole segment, it's just how it, I mean, that's how the state statutes look at it. And I think that's how we should look at it, and we're gonna draw on the same page with that, um, approach.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's all I got.
Twelve point O, Mayor and Council Reports on Boards and Commissions.
You know, Dale and I went to landfill meeting last week, the only thing there much was switching over to LEDs. See if they can save some money there, and as far as emergency management and nine one one, really just basic stuff, nothing important. No big deal. I had a tourism meeting, but there wasn't, uh, much, much there for discussion this time, so. Just election of officers.
Nobody else? Thirteen point O, Public with Business with Accounts on Items Not on the Agenda.
Tom Burgen, can I just, I didn't know I could get up during some of this, so I, I kinda missed a couple of things, I'd like to back up. One's about the bicycles, the licensing, I have no idea what they are, but here again, being out in the country, I keep one down at one of my buildings, cause I write Casey's law. What's the status on licensing a bicycle if you live out of town?
If the bike's in town and you use it in town, I assume you need the license in town.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that, I just wanna make sure.
How much, how much is it?
Missing, they have the serial number and everything, if they find it, they can get it back to you.
How much is it? Fifty cents.
Ouch.
Oh. And actually, and I'm gonna say this, they did, you guys found a bike in Iowa City, I heard. A bike got stolen from Anamosa and was found in Iowa City, could have licensed it.
One other thing, I'd like to back up to the, the cemetery, just real quick. I did go out there this weekend to my, to my dad's grave site, and it was like walking through a, a minefield. Because of the geese.
Don't worry about the dogs.
Yeah, and, and that's kinda where I'm going with it, you know, obviously people don't care, because they're gonna let their dogs urinate. And crap wherever they want to, but I do kinda wonder if you can't let the dogs walk through there. I understand if you don't, whatever you wanna do, but, uh, you know, when I, we drove through the other day, I'd seen, I think it was Greg had said something. Or Betty or someone was talking about the stuff, there was two beer cans sitting on someone's headstone, there was stuff all over the place. I believe Rod, you said something about, uh. Or someone over here about the sheep's hook, or about a foot out or something. We have two plaques, uh, on my dad's. One of them, which is drilled into the concrete about probably two inches in, because the concrete on his is exposed. And one of the plaques is adhered to the headstone, the other one is drilled into the concrete. And I know it's really hard to mow and maintain these things, but even that one that is stuck in there. Is bent over from mowers, because you know, a lot of these guys use the zero turns anymore, where they just buzz around that, because it saves time on the mowing. The weed eating part of it, because let's face it, that's, I think that's why a lot of cemeteries are blow ground, and someone said something about the cups. A lot of cemeteries have the cups that flip upside down and lay flat, cause they can just run over everything, they don't have to worry about hitting anything. So I guess I kinda have questions on that one foot radius. I mean, it is a place of memorial and memories, it's not a place for trash, garbage, and people to just spread their stuff.
Brick-a-brack.
Brick-a-brack. So, I guess that's my two cents word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose?
Super quick, um, I just wanted to make a little announcement, um, our long time.